All right, I think we've got, uh, I think we have everybody that we were expecting to be on the phone. So, I have, uh, I'll just go through who I have on the phone. Uh, I have Mayor Wilson, myself, and Councilman Brown, Boone, Robinson, and Conyers. Also Lisa Hanks, uh, City Attorney Marcus McDowell, and Chief of Police, uh, Stephanie Hollinghead. And, uh, Jeff Montgomery is on there for technical support and recording the meeting. So, um, I guess I'll just jump right in. You know, the reason we're here is for discussions, uh, and a vote to, uh, possibly implement a curfew in the City of Fairhope. Uh, has everybody received the email from Lisa that should have had the outline? Or actually not the outline, but the details of a curfew?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, everybody should have looked that over. It basically was modeled, uh, after Mobile's curfew. Um, I guess, uh, I'm gonna ask for opening, uh, comments. Mayor, do you wanna go first?
Sure, I can kind of introduce the, the background and thought process for this. Um, you know, the, the cities and counties that have taken the most precautions. I think we're, we're kinda seeing those results unfold now and how it's flattening the curve. Um, since we've been discussing this topic the last week, um, during our daily 10:00 AM meetings, we have a, uh, just a COVID-19 group that, that discusses, you know, things every morning. We've been talking about a curfew because we kind of all assumed that this would happen before a stay-at-home order. Um, I've spoken with many physicians, nurses, of course, lots and people that, that are concerned in the community. And then, don't get me wrong, the City of Fairhope is doing great. Everything that we have been doing from the beginning, and I hope y'all agree, has been just, you know, to be abundantly cautious. Um, but like most of you too, I've been listening to the experts in other cities that are, you know, several weeks ahead of us. And I have the benefit, you know, we all have the benefit now to learn from these cities on what they could have done sooner. And this is not about taking away individual liberties when it's dealing with a virus that can be deadly. Um, in Alabama, um, and I wasn't able to get a full list. Uh, this is just kind of a Google search before we got on the phone. But, um, every day another city is instituting a curfew, very similar to the one that Mobile did. And, you know, some of them are earlier than 10:00 PM. Um, Prattville, Tuscaloosa, Mobile, Huntsville, Montgomery County, Montgomery County as a whole, Greenville, Georgiana, Hanville, Selma, Pal- Tallahassee, Tuskegee, Oxford, Zerland, Eufaula, Opelika, Springville, and there are more. But, you know, that's again, just what I could pull up before this call. And will a curfew help? I mean, I didn't have time to call these mayors, you know, but, and I don't know. Didn't know that, you know, a stay-at-home order would help. Do I think it'll hurt? I don't think it'll hurt. Um, you know, I think that once it's put in place and PD has time to kinda get this communication out, then I do think it would help. Um, the City of Fairhope has been proactive in many local decisions. And I appreciate y'all's support with this, including the first to cancel a big event in Baldwin County, parts and crafts. And I don't think there's any questions out with right decision. The biggest reason right now, i- in my opinion, is for, th- there are a lot of kids. And I say kids, anybody under 18. They're bored, you know, they get out in groups and, you know, they do this during the day. And we definitely, uh, PD is, I, I, I think, just doing a great job communicating. Nothing's being done with iron fist. And, um, but I do think this makes it easier for parents and, you know, that, that they need to be at home at night. And I don't know really what they are gonna be doing from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM right now anyway. Everything as far as pharmacies and grocery stores are closed at 9:00 or before. And we've checked all of these out. There's so, you know, but people could still go out for essentials. That's not, you know, and, and nothing is gonna be treated like this big criminal offense. This is a conversation that we hope, once it's in place, that, you know, it can calm down some of the worry. I know that y'all been hearing from a lot of people concerned about, "We don't want this curfew, we don't want this curfew." But until we started talking about a curfew, I have been inundated with people worried, "What more are we gonna do?" And I just think it's time for us as a community to work together, take the pandemic seriously, and each of us do everything we can to protect others.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, any, anything else that is?
I mean, that's, that's most everything of my thoughts on this.
Sure, okay. Chief Hollinghead?
Yes, sir.
Let me give you an opportunity to weigh in, please.
Hello?
Yeah, we're here.
I'm sorry, did you, I didn't hear what you said.
I, uh, I said, "Go ahead. If you want to, uh, provide some input to the council, uh, you're free to, to go ahead if you'd like to."
And I, you know, I've, I've talked to the mayor and I've, I've talked to a few of you about this as well. And I think the, the concern was what was the impact that it was gonna have on the police department. Um, I don't know the answer to that. It is, you know, the curfew is from 10:00 to 5:00. And I'm hoping that the, if, if we go forward with the curfew, that the word itself will, um, give people the, it, it will make people stay inside. Um, my only concern was, and I did talk to Marcus a little bit about it today, was our ability to enforce some of these things without having the ordinance that allows us to enforce it. I know that that was something that Mobile just did as well whenever they did their curfew. So, that was, uh, that was one of my concerns, that we didn't have that in place yet. And, um, but as far as the impact that it's gonna have on the police department, I, I don't really know. Um, I, we've not been through anything like this before. It's not like a hurricane. Um, I mean, we can, I'm sure we're gonna get some pitch back. Um, everything so far has been very, um, workable. Everybody has been very cooperative. We've not had any issues. We've not had to make any arrests because people have just been defiant. We've had to bu- bust up several groups of teenagers, uh, late in the evening, uh, at some of the local estab- establishments. We've made contact with them, asked them to help us monitor that a little bit better and stay in communication with us. And, um, but, I mean, but for the most part, I mean, that, that's what we, we have been dealing with at night. Are, are the groups.
Uh, Chief, you said you, you've had to bust up some groups of teenagers at night. Are the businesses open while, while, when you do that? Are they still open for business?
No, no. There was, there was a situation the other night that occurred at Sonic. And, um, she, she's been, the manager out there has been really helpful. She, she runs them off and then we found out that they were relocating to another place next door. So, we've had to address that issue. But no, they're not allowing this.
All right. Council, uh, before I ask you your comments, do you have any questions of the mayor or Chief Hollinghead? Okay. Uh, I'll take that as a no right now. Uh, who wants to go first? Councilman Robinson? We can go like we usually do, left to, or right to left.
Yeah, that, that, that's.
Uh, Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, you know, uh, I, I just got finished reading the ordinance that, that the City of Mobile put in place to help enforce this. You know, a- and it really, it really creates, I think, more of a burden for the police in, you know, in the enforcement than, than no curfew creates. Because they're expecting you, uh, now they're expecting the Mobile Police Department to stop every car and every person who they see outside of the curfew a- and, and question them, and then see document, documentation from them that they have a valid reason to be out. And so, you know, that is a concern to me, not because necessarily of some infringement upon a right of the person out, but because of the potential exposure of the police to all of these different individuals they would have to stop. And then on the flip side of that, the exposure of the individual who has a valid reason to be out to each and every police department or police officer that they encounter. A- and so.
Wanted to tell you real quick, um, just, just quickly, that we, that's the same during the day too. If you're going to work, I mean, obviously if you're going grocery shopping and something's opened, you know what I mean, you can say you're going grocery shopping, but nothing's opened, you know, after 10:00. But, um, you do, if you're going to work, I mean, they ask you to have a letter, you know.
That's right. But, but, but they don't, but the police don't have to stop people that are out during the day. I mean, there's, you know, because.
Oh, no.
They, they can, but they're not, you know, this specifically requests that they stop every person out during the curfew hours. Now, I, I agree with the mayor.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
There, there's no reason for anyone to be out between 10:00 and 5:00 if you're not working during that timeframe. Um, you know, and so, I, I, you know, my encouragement to everyone has been, e- even the ones that are opposed to this, is to stay inside. You know, sh- don't, I mean, what's, you know, no good can come from being out between 10:00 and 5:00 if you are not working in some emergent or essential job. And I'm not talking about the governor's list of essential jobs. I'm talking about what are truly essential jobs at this point in time. Um, but, but because of my concern, you know, that, that we're going to, you know, if we, if we're gonna have a curfew, then you need to have the teeth behind it to really have an impact on people. But I think the teeth behind it, unless there's some extreme circumstances here that we're having to bust up, you know, groups, you know, multiple groups per night, I, I think we're gonna create more exposure by stopping everybody than we are by having a curfew in place. A- a- at least at this point in time. You know, everything's kinda fluid, but that is my thought as I sit here today after reading everything that's gone on in Mobile.
Okay. Councilman Conyers?
Yes, my, my thought would be, I've, I've been in favor of.
You're probably just happy to get your face out of an SBA, SBA loan application for five minutes.
Oh, man. Yeah, for five minutes, I'll take the break. Absolutely. Um, and Jay, I'm assuming you count bankers in that essential, essential list, right?
I, I, I absolutely am.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I'm in favor of, of the curfew. I mean, I think that the name of the game right now is just, the more aggressive we can be on keeping people at home, the, the quicker we can get this behind us. So, I mean, unless it's just too much of a burden for the police department, people need to stay home. And if, if putting a curfew out there would help get that message across, then I think it's probably worth, worth pursuing.
Okay. Thank you, Jimmy. Councilman Brown?
Uh-oh. Are you there? Yeah, sorry about that. You there?
Yeah, you gotta get your phone off you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, I agree with Jay. I think it creates more, more duty and also more exposure for the police department. Uh, and understanding that, you know, we don't need people, larger groups than 10:00 coming together. I mean, if we had only one instance out there at Sonic or, or two incidents, I don't, I just don't think it's a necessary action at this point. You know, curfew in, in times of hurricane or natural disaster, you know, to me is to reduce criminal activity and to criminalize that activity at this point, I don't think is necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Boone?
Uh, I concur with Jay and, uh, Robert, only in the fact of, I'm not so much as the, the, how much the police department maybe have more calls, but I am worried about the ti- the amount of exposure that they have because of those more calls. I don't want them to be exposed any more than anybody else and they're gonna have to talk to and be around anybody and everybody they have to stop. And I think with a, you know, it could be a big, real big problem. The fact that Mobile has 29 officers, uh, with the COVID virus. So, I, I don't see any reason for it at this particular time. It, it creates a problem, I think the problem of the police being exposed more is more of a problem than not having a curfew.
I just wanna add that, you know, this is really not about cars 'cause, um, Chief made a good point that until the county does something, um, you know, there's, there are people that, that travel through Fairhope. This is more about, 'cause, I mean, traveling in your car is, as far as spreading, the virus is, is safe. You know, th- so this is not, and I don't think that this would, you know, mean to actively go out, you know, and do these things. I just think it's more about, um, but there's travel on Greeno. I, I, that doesn't alarm me whatsoever. It's just having, you know, somebody mentioned that anything after 10:00 and, you know, between 10:00 and 5:00. I think during the pandemic, I just, I don't really see a, a reason why to do it. And not the last thing I want is exposure to, uh, PD. In fact, I'm, I, I bought face shields and PPE, you know, with, with purchasing, you know, weeks before people started purchasing these things. So, there's no question that we want to make sure that everybody is, um, safe. And I don't think they, that, especially if you're breaking up a group of kids, unless something's egregious, which I don't think there will be, but having it in place if police need, need to have something, you know, this is all about being proactive, not waiting for something to happen and then not having the tools to do anything. This is honestly not me, you know, jumping up and down saying, "Oh, you know, we gotta do more, we gotta do more." Th- e- every decision has literally been about trying to get through this. The quicker we get through it with everybody doing the same thing, you know, the faster we get back to normal.
Yeah. A- a- and Mayor, th- this is, this is Jay, sorry.
Uh-huh.
Um, you know, a- and that, that's, and that's kind of, you know, where I, where I am with, with the concern is, you know, the way Mobile's is written and now with the way they, they've kinda re-codified it with this new ordinance, is they do expect them to pull over every car on Greeno.
Yeah, we.
And, and that, and that's where I think the.
We don't have to do what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, but, but so if we're modeling it after them because for similar reasons, you know, I, I just, you know, eh, I'm just kinda caught.
I don't, I see, I wouldn't agree with that because, you know, you're not spreading anything by being in a car.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't think we have a lot of traffic. And I'm, and if they're traveling on Greeno, again, many might not even be, they might be just driving through.
Right.
So, I think it's more about the residential areas and, you know.
Yeah. And so, a- and, and that, and, and that kinda i- is, is, you know, if it's not, a- and I'm just tryin', I'm just thinking through this. I mean, I'm not, you know, if it's, if it, if it ha- if it's not really an issue, you know, then it, then it's, then it's a concern of me that we, that we do something, you know, almost for the sake of doing it, when we don't really think it's gonna have any sort of positive effect.
I, I think it will, yeah.
Because we don't, because we don't know.
Right. I mean, we don't know, but I don't think at all that it'll be negative as far as.
Well, I mean, I think, I think in my experience.
Like, i- it's not gonna hurt anybody as far as spreading it. You see what I'm saying? I'm, the, the only thing I'm talking about is strictly trying to, you know, protect people from the pandemic. It's not about negative comments that, "I don't think this is fair." You know what I mean?
Right, right. No, no, and, and I get that, and I, and I don't disagree with that. Um, I, I just, you know, I, 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 I do have concerns, I guess, a little bit that, that, that it would risk spreading it. And, and I think Kevin made a good point with the Mobile Police Department having, what is it, 29, 19 or 29?
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine cases, hasn't it?
Uh, people, you know, EM, EM, you know, uh, police and EMTs exposed. You know, that, that's, you know, and if we, if we start.
Well, yeah, the EMT is gonna be, 'cause they're.
Sure, absolutely.
They're the ones that are touching and treating, yes.
Um, I just, you know, I, I, I think it's.
Right.
You know, I, I know you, I know we wanna be proactive and I, you know, and I think we've been very proactive at this point. I just, I, I worry that this creates more problems than it fixes because we're not, because it's not really to the point where I, I think some of these other places have been that, that have it in place. But, I mean, I'm not, I'm very, easily could be wrong.
Let me, let me bring this back together 'cause we were still in council comments. And, you know, sorry guys, but, you know.
Sorry about that.
I'm stuck in mid- road that, uh, I never got a chance to speak and I, I patiently listened to everybody speak, so I would expect the same courtesy here. Um, so, the, you know, I, first of all, I don't think that we have a lot of lawlessness right now in the city. I don't, I think that most people are properly social distancing and maybe some aren't. And I think that there's always gonna be a time at which people are not socially distancing. There's certain people just aren't gonna do it and a lot of people are. But I, I, and I can say there is probably different degrees and various reasons to have a curfew, but my, I usually think of a curfew as something which you're, you know, you're protecting society, which we would be doing in this case. But it's not due to a lot of lawlessness. It, it sounds to me like we've had some isolated incidents of kids and we've broken them up and sent them on their way. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, if you're gonna do a curfew, you don't do a watered-down curfew. If you're gonna do a shelter-in-place, is why I wasn't really in favor of the shelter-in-place 'cause it's so watered down that I don't know exactly what it's doing. It's a suggestion.
I agree.
And, and the curfew, the curfew would almost be more, uh, as a suggestion and doesn't have a lot of teeth in it. And to, 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 if you, you know, if the country was in, in dire straits enough to, to really enact this, it would be something that I would envision with a lot of teeth. I would envision a shelter-in-place as having a lot of teeth. And I don't, I don't see a lot of teeth in, in either. So, for that reason, I don't, I, I have reservations about the curfew because it's coming over the top of an already in-place by the governor, shelter-in-place order. I, I, I just, and so we're just adding layers of laws that I, and, and I know and everybody's even stated that, you know, stated that maybe it's gonna do some good, maybe it won't, it won't. And I get that, err on the side of caution. Even if it doesn't do anything, we, we, we may not ever know, um, but it's on the side of caution. But in, in this case, when you start issuing curfews, I, I don't know. I just, I have some real concerns about it. That's it, that's my, when my, that's, I'm through with my comments. I'll let everybody comment again. Thanks for listening to me there.
Yeah, I, and, you know, and the, the last thing I'll say, or, uh, uh, maybe, maybe not the last thing, I can't promise that. Um, i- is, is that, you know, Chief, if you, if you come to me in a day and you tell me, you know, "Look, things have changed. This is something we really, we really have to have," I, I think I'd approve it without batting an eye. Um.
Absolutely.
You know, but, but with, with so much uncertainty surrounding it and, and with truly my own personal concerns about whether it would actually, huh, you know, cause, you know, participate in the spreading. I mean, and I, I really think, you know, I have concerns that there're gonna be issues with it in other areas that are, you know, that are policing it this heavy, truly stopping every vehicle. I, I mean, I think, I think, you know.
It, it's only the expectation of the citizens of, we put a curfew. It's like I talked to the mayor. I mean, the, the word "curfew" may do the trick.
Right.
And then it may not. Well, would it hurt to put a curfew in place? Absolutely not. Is it gonna help? We don't know. We won't know until we do it. So, um, a- and that's just something, I mean, we have to, to decide, you know, whether or not there's gonna be, well, we, we can't say that there's gonna be an impact.
Right.
As we, like, and, I mean, we've been pretty successful, what we've, what we're doing so far. Um, I know that it would be, and I mentioned this to the mayor today, it would definitely be so much better if we could do a county-wide than we're all on the same page. Especially when you have.
And, and they are in communication doing that.
Yeah. And, 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 yeah, 'cause that would, that would, that would cut down on everything then. I mean, at that point.
Absolutely. That would cut down on the Daphne coming into Fairhope and Fairhope going into Foley. So, I, I'm really hoping that eventually that, if we continue the route we're going, that that's where it's gonna go.
Right.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not envisioning this being like a stopping every car that rides, rides down the road. I'm envisioning this more of the, you're gonna have a bunch of teens and, and college-age kids that have, I mean, you know, they're, they're bored, they've been stuck at home, they're cooped up. I mean, they're gonna be out hanging out, wandering around a little bit at night. I, I just feel like, I mean, I'm not thinking the police are gonna get out and, you know, grab them but roll down your window and say, "Hey, show home." Yeah.
Yeah. And I, and Jimmy, I think you're, I think you're exactly right. I think that's, uh, sorry, guys.
Oh.
I've got, I've got.
And, and, you know, there, there were kids on, on roofs in downtown and, you know, that this is, this is a time, they're out of school. And, you know, w- that was definitely the beginning of why all of this conversation happened. It's, it's not in the realm of, of Mobile. I was only thinking timeframe mostly.
Right.
But doing something that suited for Fairhope is fair. And hopefully the county will come around. Because I think, like I said, traffic on Greeno and, and through traffic is, right now, I'm not concerned about that. They're not spreading anything, you know.
Okay. All right, council, any more discussion? Any more questions for the mayor or the chief? Uh, Marcus is on the line, if you have any legal questions. Okay. If I don't hear any more questions, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to, uh, pass the stay-at-home order for the City of Fairhope, uh, as you have defined there. Uh, you should have it in front of you.
Jack, it'd have to be as an ordinance.
Well, I asked Lisa about that. Um, we can, uh, we can call this a, um, we can call this an ordinance. Lisa, you wanna come in here? You, you chose to not write it as an ordinance.
I was just doing as quick as I could do it and then realized after I had done what I did that Mobile passed an ordinance. I did not realize it had to be an ordinance.
I think if you've got legal.
And it's something that y'all can consider Monday. After we've had more time to, to, you know, think about what would be proper if we did it just for Fairhope. And we have a meeting anyway.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. I mean, we could technically introduce it if it's an ordinance and then kinda see.
Well, we don't have the details yet. I don't know that we need to do it.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, it, you can, you can introduce the ordinance right now and suspend with the rules and vote on it right now.
Yeah, the wording is exactly the same except it doesn't have, uh, be resolved by the body, you know, the governing bodies.
Yeah, just say this, uh, yeah, adopt this, adopt this ordinance as defined in the stay-at-home order.
The wording is exactly the same. So, I guess we'd have to introduce it.
Well, I'll introduce the ordinance.
The only difference is you have to introduce it.
Is that you, Jimmy?
Yep.
Was that you, Jimmy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, I can barely hear.
I did, you hear. Did somebody introduce it?
Jimmy did.
I did.
Okay.
You know, my point was, what was, was following what the mayor said. And, you know, we can, we can technically vote on it Monday a- and, and let us kinda take a step back and see what the real issues are if, if, and if this is something that truly will be positive for us. Instead of voting on it now and then voting again on it on Monday.
But I mean, if you really think that it's necessary, would, would it sooner, would time not be of the essence though? Would you not be trying to do all you can do now rather than waiting six days?
Well, I mean, and that's my point is, is I don't necessarily know that it is necessary at this point.
Right, I mean, this was a proactive effort.
It's not gonna hurt, but it, it may or may not, it may not do a thing for us, but I don't see where it hurts really. I mean, I don't see who's gonna be, um, put out by not being able to get together between 10:00 and 5:00.
Again, I feel that the people that are gonna be put out of the police department, the fact that they're getting in more contact with more people because of this. And I think it, it enables them to have more ability to contact, contact or, uh, get the virus because of that. So, I think it's gonna hurt the police department myself.
And that would really be my concern.
We're doing basically the same thing now. And I, I think that that's what, that's where the PPE comes in and make sure that they're protected and, you know, it, it, it's mostly a conversation.
Yeah.
It's not a, we're not, we haven't been treating this. This is more. This is more of a communication. And to me, as a parent, it, it would be a lot easier to say, "You can't go because it's not allowed right now."
Right.
All right, well, listen, I'm gonna call, uh, I'm gonna call for a motion for immediate consideration. Now, this, just keep in mind, this is only a vote for immediate consideration and not for how you wanna vote on the ordinance necessarily. I'll second it. Do we have, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion for immediate consideration. Kevin?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second for immediate consideration. All right, any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of immediate consideration. Let's do roll call. Uh, Jay?
Council President?
Oh, aye.
Place two?
Uh, aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, being that that's unanimous, we can, uh, I'll call for a motion for final adoption.
They're moved.
Second. Kevin? We have a second? You got that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so on the motion for final adoption, any discussion? Okay, clerk, if you'll call the question?
Council President?
No.
Place two?
No.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
No.
Place five?
No.
Motion failed. I will say that we could bring it back up Monday if it, if it, uh, if, if things change. You know, we, we can change it at any time, but, you know, motion failed. All right. I, we don't have any other business, so I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.